Appeals. It's now June 27th, Monday at 7:05 PM. Sitting as the Board of Appeals or myself, Woody Chitik, Dave McMorris, Vice Chair, Charlie Higginson, Mike Dickey, Matt Watkins, and Lee Darst, and we're accompanied by Carolyn Murray, Town Council. And Cassandra Thayer is our Chief Host or something, or whatever you, your, you're, you're critical in any, so for the purpose of the public, I think the Board understands, this is a special meeting to really determine as a group, what the metrics, the standards should be for a well farm, a project at 46 Border Street. Charlie, 46 Border Street, which is a complex of different restaurants operating with different styles and different hours, but it's primarily to determine the number of parking spaces that we feel should be required. Start, start to state at the front that our parking bylaw is not the worst in the state from looking at it, but it's not very good. It's ambiguous and incomplete in some areas. So I think it's going to have to be up to the Board to determine what we supplement or amplify it with. Now, Dave, your Vice Chair, do you have any opening comments about this process that we're on?
Um, no, except to say that I think it's important that we have a fairly clear criteria for the applicant to follow. Keeping in mind, this is a special permit. So our, you know, what we're looking at is to make sure that there's no substantial detriment to the town with the plan that we eventually consider. With that in mind, I, I think everybody's ready to go.
Okay. Does somebody want to lead this discussion off? I mean, I'm happy to, but I do a lot of talking. Well, Mike, you didn't have to have that such a big brand. It could have been something subtler. Well, let me start off by, by saying then that I, I think that at least from my personal point of view, Section E, I wasn't there a month ago, but 7.1E does, does deal with a, with a headcount measurement of one space for every three seats. And if the seats are benched, it's one space for every six linear feet. And while the bylaw seems to indicate to me at least that this applies really only to mixed use developments in three highway business districts. The fact remains that this Board has in the past applied that metric for basic restaurant seating. We could start there if it's flawed, fine. I mean, the other area that I, that the bylaw is silent on, other than in convalescent homes, nursing homes, has to do with employees by and large. I think we're all familiar with this property. It's been a restaurant for 50, 60, 70 years. It's grown over time. Parking has been inadequate as, as it went through its various evolutionary stages and as a result of approvals in the past of the more recent past being 2000, 1991, not very recent, have, have encompassed off-street parking still under the control of the then owner. Because it was, parking was never adequate on this site. And as a result, there was a lot of on-street parking, on sidewalk parking, to the extent where people have commonly had to walk in the road because they, they couldn't get around the parked cars. But with that having been said, the applicant would, you know, and I can appreciate the applicant's point of view, that they would defer or revert to the one space for every three seats, but basically the measurement plus for, for the fine dining restaurant and other restaurants and other establishments. I happen to feel that probably is not adequate in terms of getting cars off the road. And I believe there should be something dealing with some, some standard dealing with employee parking. It's always been an issue on this site. Employees parked down in Elm Street or farther away and had to run the thousand or feet or more back to the restaurant, but it worked for a while. So I don't know who would like to start off. I mean, certainly, is there another point of view other than starting with sort of a basic principle of one seat for every three, I mean, one parking space for every three seats?
Yeah, you know, just speaking of myself, I think that was the conclusion that I came from, came to part of that was by looking at the 2006 town meeting. You know, reading some of the promotion that was associated with the changes. And I do believe that they were solely focused on encouraging business development there around, on 3A, around the train and then kind of taking a look at the fact that this is the rule that's been utilized by the Board in other similar cases that 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 logic seemed to make sense to me as it relates to the to the restaurant components of it. And I think once we get concurrence on that, maybe some more discussion on the employees piece and kind of how do you tackle that? Is it, are we able to take a hybrid approach of utilizing different column letters in the code? Or is that, you know, I guess we could have some more discussion on that, but I think as far as the three to one, that makes sense to me from everything I've seen.
About other people? I really would like to hear from everybody on these points because it's a
Charlie Higginson, I agree with Matt Watkins. What, what we have, the three to one seat and the dining room is fine. The employees I feel have to be taken care of, their parking has to be taken care of in some fashion. And also some of the spaces in the various plans that they've submitted, I, I, I think need to be taken into consideration, needing parking spaces also.
Mike, what do you think?
Um, well, I, 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 I do think that the bylaw could be better written. That's, that's really the only thing I know for sure. But I, I, I think a couple of things. I, I, I think that we, at least me personally, I, I, I think the precedent that the Board has used in the past of this three to one, I think, I think we, I, I don't see a good reason for changing that precedent. And the other thing, you know, I don't see anything in the, in, in, in that section about addressing parking for employees. And so I'm, I'm not real comfortable adding in additional requirements that aren't kind of clearly set out in, in, in the bylaw itself. So I like the three to one. I think that's what the Board has used in prior instances and I, I can't, given the, given how poorly it's written, I'm not sure that we have any basis to change what's, what, what the Board has used as a measuring stick in the past. And, and as regards the parking for employees, I, I, I don't see how we can add it if it's not in. And yet, you know, another strike against the wording of the bylaw. But so I, I think the three to one and, and, you know, cause it's, cause it doesn't address parking for employees, I think we have to just, just go with the three to one. So that's my thoughts.
Like the only thing I'd add to what you said is you know, I think I agree, but when I take a look at it, that that it's been poorly written, I think to David's first point, right, is that it is a special permit. So we also have to make sure that you know, whatever we endorse isn't substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So there's a little bit of wiggle room there when, when we, when we take a look at that.
Um, yeah, no, I, I, I hear you. I, I hear you. And that's why I, 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 I think that, you know, other folks on this board and other folks in the community, if they're listening in, could come to different interpretations, but that, that, you know, Woody asked for my thoughts and that's, that's, that's my thinking on this.
Lee, where do you come out?
I mean, I understand the balancing act and you know, this is a, a space that everybody wants to see develop. However, you know, we have heard from neighbors and they are concerned about parking. And I, and I don't know whether I heard it on, on one of our hearings or someplace around town, but apparently the you know, the, for the Old Salt, the employees are told to park as far away as possible or, you know, to find parking spots and you know, there's going to be a lot of employees and I, I think that I really, I think that we have to balance that because you know, it to promote, you know, safety, convenience, welfare and the inhabitants of Cohasset. I think that you know, we do have to look at the whole traffic situation in the parking. And the other situation that I'm going to probably ask a question about is the, the charging station spots. Because apparently some, some charging stations take four hours to charge and some fast ones take less. And that seems like an interesting set aside where they said they have charging electric charging spots and it'd be interesting to see how long they expect the charges to take if people are just going to come and park there and charge their cars. Anyway, those are my thoughts. And the, and the, and the implementation of, of the parking situations and how many people they're actually going to have in the restaurant at one time. I think that that, that, I mean, I think that that presents a challenge. I, I don't know who does the monitoring of how many people that they have on location because it's specific for exact amounts of people and how, how is that going to be monitored?
Well, in that regard, we did apply a headcount limit to Old Salt House back some, some years ago, and they have, the first two years, they were cut back to something like 52 seats. And we measured it by, by the number of seats. And then they found off-site parking and, and went up to 98 or whatever it was seats. But I've been by there and seen them, seen Old Salt turn away patrons, even though they had empty tables. Because they were, they were at their capacity. Zoning board rated capacity, not, you know, building capacity. I, I think that can be monitored. I think if any of us went in there and saw more than 96 patrons, you know, we'd certainly blow the whistle and they would be in violation of the special permit and would probably, you know, get a cease and desist order. I know it's vague. I, 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 yeah, I, I go back to the, to the the very first, as I said in an email or memo, the very first responsibility of a zoning board by statute in Chapter 48 is to promote the health, safety, convenience and welfare of Cohasset by lessening congestion in the streets. And whether our bylaw doesn't fully deal with that in, in specific metrics, I think we have a responsibility to ensure public safety. And, and I, anyway, Dave?
Yeah, I, you know, I, first of all, I wanted to say that I've been very impressed with the applicant's flexibility, creativity, and attempts to make everything work here within the bylaw. And I, you know, I think that they've, they've taken a very good approach to it. That said, I think I'm in total agreement that there's no reason to differentiate between a restaurant and a mixed-use project or a restaurant, a freestanding restaurant. I do, I do understand that perhaps a mixed-use development would have theoretically more opportunities for empty parking spaces from the other uses. And maybe that's why it's differentiated, but I don't see a big practical reason for all of that. So I'm pretty satisfied with the, by, you know, per seat, per parking space application. I share the concern that about employee parking. This, this isn't a theoretical project. We know the site. We know the street. We know the history. We know the problems. Every one of us has walked down that street when people are parked, you know, up against the, the fence by the harbor and had to walk out in the street. It's just not safe. And I don't think that we can discharge our obligations unless we pay very close attention to that. I think that with the number of employees that a facility like this, the restaurant is going to have, that just applying that the, you know, one parking space per three seats is not going to provide adequate parking. It's not going to assure the safety of the citizens. And I think that personally, I would be very satisfied if the applicant was able to come forward with the proposal that they have with an additional solution to the employee parking problem. Whereas, you know, there's a big lot at St. Anthony's, there's some town-owned lot areas that, that might be utilized. And I think that, that the applicant has been very creative so far. And I think probably we can reach out and be as creative to find space for the employee parking. But I think it's a great project. I think it's important for the town, the project to go forward. But I think it's exceptionally important for the town that the project go forward safely.
That the project, what, your last couple of words I didn't get?
Go forward safely.
Safely, okay. Charlie, where are you in this?
I, I agree with the one parking per three seats in the dining room. If something is retail, I feel it should be, meet the retail parking requirements in the bylaws. That would apply to the, the lobster pound. Some issue would be how big the, that retail is, is the whole lobster pound? Is it only the little hundred square feet that they marked? Or is it also the shaded area out beyond that? I don't see how you get to the lobster pound without going standing in the shaded area. And then you have that large retail place labeled retail. And it would seem to me that would have to be supply retail parking.
It's labeled, it's small, 100 square feet is labeled retail. That's all.
I know, but retail in a store also includes the area where the, the product is. And that would seem to be the lobster pound. So I'm not sure. I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just questioning. I would like to, I'd like to consider that. And I also noticed the shaded area in the walkway was 8.1 feet wide and 23 feet long in one place and 30, you know, 28 in another. What is that? Is that retail space or, or what? And, but I totally agree with what has been said that this, I think it's a very imaginative project and I'm all, all for it. My only problem is that I think it should meet the Cohasset zoning of parking, zoning restrictions.
Okay, maybe we could, we should take a kind of a, a sidestep and, and see if we agree with the applicant. First of all, going in premise that if I, if there is a, an operation, a coffee shop, I'll pick on them that is open for certain hours, but their, their operating hours do not overlap with that of the fine dining restaurant, that there's, that we really shouldn't be double counting. I mean, if, if people are coming and exiting at three o'clock because the coffee shop shuts down, do we have to provide coffee shop parking even at eight o'clock at night? I, I, I kind of buy the premise myself that if there's no overlap in operating hours, you don't double count if, 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 however, the retail or coffee shop or lobster pounder is open, are open during the day, that of course you count all of them. But in this case, I think it's the fine dining room that, that, or restaurant that has the most intense use. But anyway, how do people feel about this? Not, I don't mean to prejudice by saying not double counting, but you know, it's presumably when a coffee shop shuts down at three, people are gone by five when the restaurant opens up. There's no reason to, well, maybe the nice view. But any points of view on that one?
No, that, your, your, your analysis makes sense to me. You know, i- i- if a certain segment of the facility isn't actually in use, then there's no reason why we should take into consideration parking spots for non-existent customers.
Others?
I'd agree with that.
I, I agree with that.
Okay. So at least we, we have that, that part in agreement. So we, we then go back to the fine dining restaurant with its 96 seats. Whether it's winter or summer, they're, they're basically going to be capped at 90 to 96 patrons. And then we have the issue of how do the, what happens to employees? I can count the 96 seats and I can readily understand whether I totally agree or not is, is, is irrelevant. I can totally understand the principle of one parking space for every three patrons. But off to the left, you've got an almost 2,000 square foot kitchen with all, all manner of employees, you know, prepping, cooking, waiting on tables, bussing, cleanups. And these people have no no, no, no parking because I, I think you could argue even that three people per car is probably excessive. Most people show up at restaurants in this town, two to a car, couples or whatever. Occasionally, people will pile in four to a car, but that's not the norm. But I, I don't want to argue the three-seat stuff. Should it be for, you know, one space for every two seats? What, what concerns me is this big gray area and an untold number of employees, but they've got to be a lot. If it's fine dining, they're not just going to sling, sling the hash out. I mean, they're going to be doing a lot of food prep and, and a lot of gourmet cooking and, and with, you know, high-quality service. And I don't know where those people park. And, and yet if we say, well, not to worry, we don't need to provide parking for them. I, I, I know they'll be in the street on the sidewalk. Most likely. Yeah, I do. I mean, I, I mean, this is a, this is, this is a project that I would like to see happen, but not at the expense of public safety. And, and I think there've got to be creative solutions. Not necessarily of our own devising, but I would certainly like to see some creative solutions. Anyway, that's my little editorial, but that's why I'm concerned about the retail. And that's why I suggested that we look at Section 71G, which really deals with employees of businesses. Um, they have, you know, they, they define a lot of different kinds of businesses, none of which are restaurants, but you know, they, they do require a certain parking on a, on a square footage basis, one for every 100 feet. Which would apply, I think, to the lobster pound as well on that one. So, so we have a kind of a, kind of contrary points of view. That's good. Does anybody want to chime in and either kind of break the tie or, or, or argue one side or another? I, I will ask one more thing. I'll ask Carolyn. Maybe it would be useful if you would opine at this moment on the basis that if the bylaw is silent and doesn't cover something, does our jurisdiction extend to, I would say, common sense solutions, trying to find analogous situations? Or are we prevented from taking any action because the bylaw is silent? The bylaw, by the way, is silent on a lot of things. And I think all towns face that. But Carolyn, what, what, what's, this is a special permit. How far?
Well, let, let's, let's remember that if there is an appeal of this decision, what the court's going to look to is whether or not the Board's decision was arbitrary and capricious, or was it supported by the law, the bylaw, you know, is it legally tenable? That's what the court's going to look at. So if you've I'm looking at your bylaw, you have a variety of uses here. And as you pointed out earlier, Woody, with the exception of convalescent nursing homes and hospitals and the like, which doesn't have any, none of the other uses listed, have a special carve-out provision for employees. And I think one of the reasons that convalescent homes, nursing homes and hospitals, et cetera, were treated a little bit differently is one often says that, well, the number of beds that a hospital or a nursing home may have is one indicator as to its capacity, if you will. But many of those people who are patients don't have their cars parked in the, in the lot out back. And so that's why I think the employee emphasis for parking for those uses is spelled out specifically for C and D. When you look at all of your other uses, whether it is a funeral home, whether it's retail, whether it's a veterinary hospital, a warehouse, whatever it happens to be, all of those uses we know come with employees. So I think when the parking ratio was developed at one per, you know, 100 square feet or one per 500 square feet or one space for every three seats, whatever the ratio was that town meeting in its wisdom adopted, I think implied in that ratio was an allotment made for employee parking. I think you have to read that in here for all of these uses because with the exception of C and D, none of them say, you know, for an office space, you know, one space for 100 square feet plus one space for every employee. We don't say anything like that in any other use. So I think that the Board inserting into the bylaw a requirement for employee parking where it is not there, I think the Board's decision could possibly be upset as being arbitrary and capricious. And I know I missed your last meeting, so I had a conflict, but I certainly got a briefing from my colleague and I think I heard at the, the outset of this meeting that there was established some precedent that this one space for every three-seat ratio has been used for restaurants in town. That's the first thing that, that
for, for the restaurant portion.
Going to look at or what a court's going to look at.
Yes, but employees were, were told not to park on-site. Employees were specifically directed by the owner and the Board to go to the Elm Street overflow. And until they had, had that, they were constrained in terms of patronage.
For, for all of the restaurants?
What?
For all of the restaurants where the ratio of one to three was used?
Basically. Basically, that, well, the Salt House and Atlantica, and Atlantica had to provide overflow parking. It was a common owner. So the distinction was 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 a paper one. I mean, they they shared a kitchen and and et cetera, et cetera. So there wasn't any any distinction, but it was well-understood that employees had to park off-site, but they had to park.
Well, we have to be, we have to be careful. We have to be careful that, you know, what's well-understood. May not necessarily be a condition of a permit. You know, if if it, if um, if some sort of off-site parking, and I believe you've mentioned this before, Woody, that. With the old Salt House in Atlantica. There was some. Understanding, maybe a condition of the permit, whatever it might have been. To use some other site for employee parking. You have the ability here. Through your special permit to impose some conditions. And you, one of those conditions could be that. Parking is reevaluated at some point, whether it's at at certain intervals. Maybe you'd want to have it reevaluated six months after this is uh, this site is. Operational, six months after the fine dining restaurant is operational. Maybe you also have them come back at one year. Just so that you've got the experience of seeing what a summer is going to be like down here, because that's when everyone's gonna want to sit. That outside deck, where people are going to be drawn to the harbor. You could build some things into your into your permit, some conditions into your permit. That if parking is a problem. Or if um, you know, if if we're finding that there is overflow parking. Or it's becoming a a police problem, whatever it happens to be, that they've got to come back with a solution.
So.
Whatever that might be.
So one empowers the the police department to ticket. They 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 can't, they're not gonna look up registrations. And determine that. You know, John Smith is an employee versus a a tourist. That that's asking much too much, right? We'd agree with that. So they'll have to be vigorously ticketing people. Your your recommendation is is that we work, we ask the police department to take it as vigorously.
You know, another thing is the board could certainly ask as part of the condition, you could say. There is precedent from the, for this particular site to have used off-site parking for its employees. And while, you know, we could think about how we word this condition, but while the site may. Meet technical compliance with the parking bylaw. The board, based on its personal knowledge of the site and history, um. Does not believe that there is going to be sufficient parking for all of the people who are going to be drawn to this area. So if you want to. Put a condition in that that encourages the property owner to explore off-site parking for its employees. If you want to put in exploring something with the town or Saint Anthony's Church, as as David had mentioned. Or any other sites and report back to the board. You could do that as well. You know, one of the things we kind of forget about here sometimes is that, you know, they're looking to run a business. And they certainly want to run a successful business. And if people are going to drive by, take one look at the parking lot. And say, oh, forget it, we can't even get in there tonight. That's gonna hurt them in the long run. Especially if some of those people who are parking there are their employees that aren't generating any revenue for them. Or if the people parking there are folks that are really down there using, you know, the 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 docks, the waterfront for some other reason. So it's in their best interests. To find other parking or to make sure that the people who use their parking are truly just the patrons of their site. So I I think the board could get creative in some of the special permit conditions to. Monitor this and and bring it back before you, and if necessary, require some adjustments.
I I tha- then you you've lost me, I guess. I don't understand what kind of requirements, what other adjustments we could require. We we say, okay, you've you've got a permission to have ninety-six patron seats, and now we're gonna change it to sixty-six. Because there's too much on-street parking. I don't think that would fly.
Well, to your point about just saying, we don't necessarily know that, you know, the the people who are parking down here on the streets. We can't attribute all of it to one site's problem.
Okay.
Yeah. I, you know, what, it it would be, it would be a little difficult to do something like that. Um, but. The board, if you have a concern that this is going to be a traffic or a public safety problem. You can require some time where they have to come back. And report in. And. Explore some other off-site options to alleviate parking or to provide more parking onsite just for their patrons.
And to, you know, to Carolyn's practical point about the business operation. Um, if that stretch. If the stretch of border street becomes continuing safety hazard. That can always end up being a no-parking area. You know, the town can change it to no parking, and then the business is gonna be forced to find places for the employee parking, because they're not gonna want them in those patron spaces.
Why? Why couldn't it be a no-parking area now? I mean, the street is so narrow.
Because we can't do that, but the town.
Yeah.
I mean, as a practical matter, that's gonna force the issue itself. But, you know, I, it it would be nice if there's something that we could do to to enhance the safety. Of the whole parking situation here, but if we can't. You know, maybe the circumstances themselves are gonna force it. And I think, you know, we haven't heard from the applicant either. They may have some ideas on how to solve this. They've been, you know, they've been pretty responsive and pretty creative so far.
And Carolyn, you don't think that G, the phrase, seven-one G. Other business establishments, including retail businesses, whether service-oriented or otherwise. You you think that uh retail businesses, whether service-oriented or otherwise, would not apply to this operation?
I think it does apply to some of them. I mean, they've given you a breakdown, like the the lobster pound, for example, where, you know, it's not a restaurant. You know, they don't have any seats, so they've got it broken down um based on square footage, at least I, unless I. Think I'm looking at the most recent plan. Um. That, um, so that's just based on on retail space. Um. The ice cream shop, the the coffee shop, all of these other places do have seats, so they are using.
Gone away, I think the.
Oh, ice cream is gone away completely?
Well, it's not on the plan, it's not on the plan submitted. Most recently.
Okay.
Who knows?
Are they still? Okay, so I'm looking at plans that, okay, are they still looking at the seasonal kiosk, however?
Uh, a retail kiosk, um, they're not calling it seasonal, it's a retail kiosk.
Okay. So whatever space that occupies, yeah, that's gonna be the one space per one hundred square feet. For that, for those uses.
Sure, that that and the lobster pound retail area, but but everything seems to point to thirty-two. Um, parking spaces required, which I think they have, um, absent any employee parking. On site. And I didn't know if the other other um retail businesses, whether service-oriented or otherwise. Would would qualify for that, one space per hundred. If that really only means a business establishment, not a restaurant. And not restaurant employees, but employees of businesses. Except for restaurants, all right. But I don't see where restaurants are excluded or included, one way or another here. Other than to be a business establishment, a retail business establishment.
I I think what would be telling here, though, is, and and again, I I um, I'll agree with everyone who has said. Could the bylaw be more clearly written? Yes, I think we universally agree on that. But where restaurants are mentioned in E. And they are mentioned. You know, as as part of a mixed-use development. I think, you know.
That's a very specific.
That's sort of telling.
That's a very specific definition of a restaurant, as part of a mixed-use, which this is not. So they they're they're not talking about restaurants writ large, they're talking about restaurants that are part of a mixed-use development. In three districts. It can't get much more specific or narrow than that.
I think it is up to this board to decide what do you think is the appropriate ratio to apply.
Yeah.
I think you do have to bear in mind how it's been interpreted previously.
Well. It would, keep in mind, it was, I mean, I don't want to just sort of brag on this, it was interpreted differently because the bylaw was written differently when. The Salt House decision was rendered, and the Atlantica, the bylaw was changed after the courts. Or the or the town. Um, rendered. And the the wording changed, so to my mind, the the approval by the appeals court. Doesn't really apply because that's a a bylaw that no longer exists. And that's a pretty narrow uh interpretation, I'll grant you, but. All this stuff about, you know, the the districts and things, that's, that was a. Insertion in two thousand and six. Did they drop something out inadvertently? Possibly, but the town did have four. Bites at the apple through the Economic Development Council, the Board of Select. People, the town meeting vote, and the Attorney General's review, so it wasn't like. Somebody, uh, you know, left off a phrase. And and nobody of its, of the six hundred people at town meeting caught it. I I, that's just. Somewhat defi- I I don't know, I mean, I, it's a dumb. The wording is terrible, that does, that doesn't help us. Um. Okay, I understand your. I I don't know, I I mean. We may be in the position of reviewing traffic studies, ordering traffic studies. I don't know whether we have that authority, I don't know, we can look at police reports, we can try to ascertain if the police are ticketing with with the. Uh, vigor or not. If they aren't, we can't do much about it. And then we come back. I mean, I I would like to see this approved, but I'd like to see it approved with adequate parking. Uh, of of the uh. Invention of of the uh applicant. But. Maybe our hands are tied. What do you think, Dave?
Well, I mean, we have had experience with this site. When it. It had more seats before, and I think fewer parking spaces, and it was a mess. Um. And that was when the employee parking was elsewhere.
Well, it had more parking spaces too, I mean, it had fifty-five. I admit, half of them were in the road, but uh. Never mind.
Right. Um, I think, you know, I. I think the seat, the parking space. You know, per three seats is the proper way to go. The question is the employee parking. Because I think that is where the problem is gonna be. The employees to to be near the site are going to park on that street. There's no space there, who knows, maybe they're gonna park in the lot, but I would be surprised if the. If the owners would want that. Um, but it's just. I think it's gonna be a problem, it's it's how it gets addressed or whether it gets addressed, that is the question.
What if they start?
So I really would like to hear if the applicant has some thoughts on this.
Yeah, I I would just say, what if they start parking behind the lakekeepers, which would then take parking spaces away from the sailing club? Which is a a town, you know, established town amenity that's uh well over fifty years old. What if they in fact park down around the sailing club, or have the uh temerity to park, I wouldn't. Uh, where the fishermen. Um, park. Um, you know, the the closer to the restaurant, the more attractive that parking will be, although it's already occupied by. A number of civic uh enterprises from the harbor master. On on through the sailing club, that's all. And. I I think, well, yeah, I'd like to hear from the applicant if there's a creative solution, if not. I have a problem with public safety here. But I hope it doesn't.
Is there any rule that they would have to own the parcel, or they just could have an agreement with um, you know, I. Uh, you ask wouldn't be that they, and it could even be, you know, hey, on Friday and Saturday nights, when it's over in this capacity, we have the ability to. Uh.
They could strike a deal with the town, not with us, because it's a town on land.
But they don't have to physically, they don't have to own the parcel, they can have just a a written agreement, and that would satisfy our needs.
I believe it has, this is some wording, Carolyn, that that has to be under their control or or, but I would think you would. They probably would qualify, wouldn't it?
Yeah, there is some language, this is in um. Section seven-point-two, paragraph C. That talks about the walking distance, you know, um. Between the parking area and the main entrance to the building of the use in question shall not exceed five hundred feet. Except that in the case of parking space for employees only, the distance may be increased to one thousand feet. And then the walking distance shall be only over land owned or controlled by the parking generator. Or over a public way.
I think an agreement with the town could could meet that standard. I'm pretty sure the town would expect there to be an expansion. Of the parking back there, rather than uh. Um, cannibalization of the sailing club or or whatever. You know, that.
Then also, Mr. Chairman, paragraph D. Goes on to say that where required parking spaces are provided. Not adjacent to the lot on which the user structure they are intended to serve is located. Such spaces shall be in the same ownership. As the property occupied by the user structure to which the parking spaces are accessory.
Yeah, unless it's leased, and I don't know if the town would lease.
They, well, yeah, that would be a little more complicated, but the town could could enter into a lease.
Yeah, I I I think the sailing club has a has a long-term lease with the town. Um, for its parking. And they store boats there as well under lease. I I think that could be gotten, I don't know. I I think with with the right agreement, you could get around that. I don't mean.
The other thing, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I just wanted to get back to your your question a little while ago about whether or not you could require a traffic study to be done, and I I think you could. As part of your special permit authority, you're supposed to look at automotive and pedestrian safety and. Off-street parking and traffic flow, and site circulation and safety. I think you could require. Um, if you. See fit, you could require that a traffic study be done, um, and often the traffic study goes hand in hand with the parking. So you could request that of the applicant.
Wh- what recourse or authority does this board have, though, to take another step? Uh, on its own, which is, I've done a traffic study, there's a lot of on-street parking. Um, generated by this site or even not. Um, then what do we do? And there doesn't seem to be any recourse, any oper- option to provide more off-site, off-street parking.
Well, you'd have to look at what the what the traffic. Study actually shows, because my experience with traffic reports, um. They use, you know, standard land codes for these uses, and they will come up with how many trips per day will be generated, and that sort of thing. But often there are some mitigation suggestions that are built into their recommendations to make it all work. So it could be that um they provide you with some conditions for your special permit.
Okay, I mean.
I would like, I'd like to note that the town is already doing a traffic study for the village. So it should be quite easy to expand that to cover the margin street, the aborted street area.
Okay, and I think as long as it's done. Uh, yeah, I think you'd have to wait until the operation was up and running. And and uh in high season, which I don't think will be the summer. So you'd have to bring about, that's okay, I mean, you know, we could just bring a traffic study back, but. Hopefully better done than the one five or six years ago where they never even stepped foot and coacid. But but operated off a table. But um, maybe we should hear from the applicants. Does the board have any objection, or maybe we could hear from the applicants in terms of what? If any options they could put on the table.
Well, on a slightly different point, uh, the thirty-two parking places that are shown. Uh, there's no measurements uh to conform that to the parking plan of our zoning law. I I would like to see a a uh. Plan of those parking places as to whether thirty-two exist, I have a question about two of the slots. To the right. Near the coffee shop and two to the left in front of the lobster pound or the garbage disposal.
Yeah, I mean, there are, yeah, there 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 are some details such as trash and loading, uh. You know, the only way you can get to it is through a through a parking space. Uh, over by the coffee shop, now they can trash and pick up trash and unload. Uh, food, uh, when uh the coffee shop, when. Everything is closed, I suppose, after ten o'clock at night. Or eleven o'clock at night, but um. I wonder how practical that is, it may be. That would have to be part of. But I don't want to see parking spaces occupied by a food service truck. Who delivery truck. Anyway. Let's hear from the applicant, if we may, Cassandra.
Okay, I will work on bringing them forward.
Okay, Adam, you're prepared to be unmuted. Introduce yourself because, of course, it's being recorded.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, everyone, my name is Adam Brodsky, and hopefully you can hear me. And I represent the applicant Co Lobster LLC. As you know, Tom Sullivan is the manager. Eamon O'Mara is our project manager, and could you please also promote? Darren Grady and Gabriel Padilla from Grady Consulting. And I see Susan Holdley and Corinna Martin as our architects.
Yes. Working on that now.
Well, well, thank you, and either Darren or Gabriel is prepared to. Explain in more detail the plan changes, and I think that explanation may answer Mr. Higgins' factual questions. Um, but I I do want to just say that it's uh, we're we're grateful because we seem to be moving in the right direction. At least with respect to the parking requirement for restaurant use, because as you know, uh, we believe that the. Parking bylaw requires for our restaurant uses. That we use seats and benches as the criteria. And I was also happy to hear recognition that the board has the ability to consider the temporal aspects of the uses. Um, that you consider uses at different hours is very helpful, and and that's what we really have based our parking calculation on. Um, it's going to come as no surprise that I'm going to agree with town council. That the bylaw does not require employee parking for either the restaurant uses. Or the limited retail uses that we're proposing, specifically that small portion of the retail space in the lobster pound. Or for that matter, the warehouse distribution aspect of the lobster pound or the kiosk. Um, because I've always been cautioned by this board that I have to follow the bylaw. And your bylaw requires employee parking for certain uses, but not other uses, and I respectfully suggest that. Again, we 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 may have the better of that argument if we need to have that argument. I'm hopeful that that's not the case here, we're all working in the right direction. Um, I I am somewhat familiar with the historic permitting of the old Salt House, and as far as I recall, there there were no. Conditions in any of the decisions. That pertained to employee parking or required that employee parking be offsite, I just wanted to clarify that. But I I think that we have actually a margin in our parking analysis. That can accommodate employee parking, because even at peak use, um, and given the number of seats that we're proposing. Um, that we have additional parking available and that will become apparent. I mean, from a straight zoning perspective. Um, we meet the parking requirements in the bylaw for the specific uses. But as I said, if you actually take into consideration the temporal aspects, as either Darren and G will explain. Um, we we have a a margin of error. And I think we would be very open to. Conditions that would require that we come back to the board to review parking in the future. If indeed there's a parking problem. Again, I don't think you can compare what we're proposing to the historic use of this property. And at present, there's no evidence of a, you know, parking problem that will be associated with these uses, which are a fraction of the scale. Of the Atlantic operation at its height. But if indeed there were problems in the future, I don't think the board loses jurisdiction. And reasonable conditions to come in and review parking is perfectly appropriate. I mean, we we've tried and considered other options, including, I know that you've referenced the lightkeepers lot. Um, I've reached out to the town manager on several occasions and haven't been able to connect with him to talk about that. Uh, I don't think it's required. Um, we can try and further those conversations. Um, I don't believe that there are any agreements with any group. For the use of the lighting lot, there may be leases for other portions of town property for other uses out there. But at present, I believe it's just public parking available to the general public. But again, we we remain open and willing to work with the board. Uh, but the point I just wanted to make is that we believe that we conform to the parking bylaw. Uh, with that said, perhaps the best thing to do is just to have Gabriel. Just go through the plan changes to explain, and we did eliminate, as you said, the ice cream use as an. In order to reduce the intensity of uses out there, but and and we've created one additional spot, but Gabriel, why don't you take this over, please?
Uh, yeah, hi, uh, thank you very much, Adam, um, so yes, my name is Gabriel, I'm with Grady Consulting. Um, I have shared my screen here, can everyone see the plan? So we have a layout of the plan here, um, one of the things we changed from last meeting that we had. We allocated a hundred square feet for retail area for the lobster pound. Um, now that, based on the metric for retail, using one space for one hundred square feet, that gives us one space, and then the lobster pound itself. Uh, which will require one space, we completely eliminated the ice cream shop, and now we're just making that area part of the kitchen. And then the retail kiosk, we were talking last time about push carts or seasonal kiosks. We're just having that area as retail and we're treating it as such in our calculations. Um, the covered wharf during the day, it'll be a public, public area. Um, it will have seating area now after. Um, after five P M, that area will be used by the fine dining restaurant for soul uh surplus. Um, which is within those ninety-six seats, so we have sixty-eight seats inside, and then we have twenty-eight in the covered warf. So by that metric, we we split up uh the uses in the the building. Completely so during the morning, the hours of seven A M to three P M, um, we. We have uh, the fine dining restaurant is closed. Um, but we have a coffee shop that has thirty seats that will require ten spaces. Uh, lobster pound uh is retail only requires one, and the holding and receiving area. As per the bylaw requires one space. Uh, the retail kiosk, now we are considering um ten spaces due to it being now uh. One uh thousand square feet pretty much, um, and then the covered wharf, which we're now. Um, counting uh per seats. Um, we have twenty-eight seats in that area with which pretty much covers nine spaces for that covered wharf. To be used as a public space. Um, that gives us a total of thirty-one spaces, we are providing thirty-five spaces here. Um, so if we consider that, you know, you're not going to have the covered wharf all the time, uh. If with public visitors, um, you still have an over just four spaces.
Your your own data shows thirty-two spaces. Not thirty-one, I mean, just to be precise.
Well, uh, we will continue on with the parking calculations during the afternoon. Now, during the afternoon, the only operation would be the restaurant, the fine dining restaurant, well, like I said earlier, the. Covered wharf now will be part of that fine dining use. So that will bring us to the ninety-six seats, which will bring us to the required thirty-two seats. So between the morning and the afternoon, the maximum of both would be thirty-two spaces required. And if we add a ten percent surplus to that, will give us the thirty-five spaces that we have already provided. Which are all conforming.
And and Mr. Chair, we did provide a summary in table format. In the, using the matrix that you provided to us.
Oh, I think we all got that, yeah.
Excellent, and and that's also available if Gabriel wants to pull that up or.
I don't think there's much debate about the thirty-two. Seats uh required, I mean, I haven't gotten any sense that this board wants to challenge that calculation. Because because of the uh. You know, the uh lack of overlap between fine dining and these other operations.
That is correct.
Right, so I don't think you need to. Make a make a, you know, you've made a strong case, uh, just via your data.
That's what we came here for, to uh give a strong case. That's what we have.
Yep.
Um, another thing that uh was um was said. Um, I just want to touch into this. Um, so the enclosure area right now, we are not touching what is existing right now. So we're only changing the the fence. But the dimensions stay stay the same, right now, there's an area there which. Um, we were using it as a parking space, but we made the proposed building. Smaller in this area in order to accommodate a next-to-spot. Um, so we are not affecting the loading area, it would be more on on what was proposed previously.
Is is the red, does a red line refresh my memory, does a red line? Um, indicate the uh existing structure or the proposed structure?
The existing structure.
Okay, all right.
Oh, if anyone have uh any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
The, go ahead, Adam, I mean, you know, the the purpose of this meeting is for the zoning board to. Decide on the metrics to be used for parking, and it really is boiling down to should there or shouldn't there be employee parking?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair, I I I wouldn't ask the question, if you were going to impose an employee parking criteria. What would that be? You would be making it up out of whole cloth, because it has not been required in the past.
Well, I I, all right, I don't want to get into a big, I don't think, because of. I may disagree with town council slightly, that if our charge is to. Uh, protect and and uh. Ensure the public safety, I don't think we have to look. And say that everything is uh completely covered in the bylaws, I don't think there's probably a zoning bylaw. In the state that covers every single eventuality, and um. So I'm I'm more concerned about, uh, as you've heard, overheard, uh. You know, parking on the street, uh, parking that it will be difficult to control, difficult to monitor. But.
Mr. Mr. Chair, but that that's all. Possibilities. That may or may not happen in the future, we're not proposing to make any use of on-street parking. Uh, we believe that we have sufficient conforming parking onsite as required in the bylaw. And as I said, how would you, how would you quantify any new employee parking?
Well, I would go to G, I would go to G, Adam, but but one, one per hundred feet. Um, but what, where will your employees park?
I I'm sorry, I, Mr. Chair, I I didn't understand, so you.
I'm sorry, I go to section G, seven point two G, which has one space per hundred square feet. That's that's the metric I'd apply.
Well, but that's for office and retail, the word restaurant doesn't appear there, and in that section, it does not.
A lot of words don't appear there.
It does not require, it doesn't require employee parking in section.
So a- answer my question, where where will employees park?
Uh, they will uh uh park in parking spaces onsite that are available, and that they would have to legally park elsewhere.
They will park onsite. And at times.
A- a- as you said, we have additional parking spaces uh. Uh, a- available that exceed the requirements of.
Free, free, Adam, I I suspect you have more than three employees in this comp uh fine dining.
Yes, sir, and and then they'd have to find public parking that would have to be available for them, just like anyone else.
Okay. All right, board.
It would be, I I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, it would be no different than the employees of the restaurants in the downtown district. Uh, where they have the available municipal parking, uh, there's no onsite parking for any of those restaurants, and so the employees need to find. Legal parking in town so they can go to work.
It is, it is legal in town to park in the town parking lot.
Yes, sir, and it's legal, it's legal to park on the street, and it would be legal to park in the lightkeepers parking spot, which I believe is just an open. Public parking area.
Okay, board, what questions or? Comments?
Legal to park in the street in the town for two hours. I presume most of the employees have jobs lasting longer than two hours.
Mr. Higgins, I I'm not aware of any time limits on parking on border street, but I'm not an expert in that area, I don't know whether.
I thought we were talking about the town.
The Village Business District. A distinction. Between Border Street and the Village Business District.
Yes, I I'm not aware of any present restrictions of of time restrictions of parking on border street, I know it was something that the. Board was discussing, and I imagine they could pursue that with the selectmen. But at present, I'm not aware of any restrictions.
Well, you you still are not listening to Charlie, who's talking about the Village Business District, he's not talking about border street, that's all.
Yes, sir.
Can I make a a comment, this is Eamon O'Mara.
All right. Sure.
Just, um, I think as Adam opened up. Really appreciate sort of the general. Discussion of where we're at, and I appreciate the comments about our creativity, and you know. I share that same feeling with with you all, I mean, we're all trying to come up with this solution. It's interesting, and it all sort of comes to the parking, and you know, often always does. Um. And you're, as we discussed earlier, the current lot, you know, has much more parking. And one of our objectives with this project from the get-go was safety, really. And was walkability and bicycle pathways and. You know, the kids that bike, you know, along Border Street and the residents who are on Border Street. The, what our goal, what our objective really was to. Im- improve that safety and maybe Gabe, you could pull the site plan up again. But in doing a conforming. Spatial dimensioned parking lot. That has proper turning radiuses and. And and then the the additional, was it up to fifty five spaces that are currently there now? They're parked all along really the sidewalk. So they just park right across what is a pedestrian or or bicycle path. So. In in what are, all we can do is work with this bylaw. And address the components and do a very clear math problem and you've agreed, you know, we're not debating the thirty two. And we have thirty five spaces, but of course. You know, we're also then trying to fit into a. Code conforming lot that is more attractive, but that is safer. And the safety points of the entry exit, along with the clear path of pedestrian or bicycle route. Is the big vision here. So if we follow bylaw and it says one to three plus, okay, non-seated areas, what are the calculations there? One to one hundred or one to five hundred? And we get to thirty two and we have thirty five spaces, we. Have met that objective, but keep in mind, we're also meeting these other broader objectives of safety. Uh, of not parking off property and to solve this within the boundaries of the private parcel. Is what we're showing you. And in doing that, we scaled the building down and and addressed uses of hours and I think that. Um, I really appreciate. Everyone's attitude and the sort of creativity as you've been encouraging us and we've worked very hard on this. Is to take this package and see it. Not only from fitting within the bylaw and and actually conforming. But a better condition that addresses safety and the residents and the people that live on the street.
Well, yeah, and and if you could, if you could um come up with a plan and persuade me that. You can accommodate uh off-site or someplace that you're. Uh, controlling uh employee parking, I'd I'd love to, I'd love to see it. Right now, I see patronage parking and. No attention paid to employee.
Right, right. And as I, as we've been informed by our our council, that's just not required by the bylaw, so we 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 can't.
Well, we'll have to see.
So we're trying to find a way around that. To to address.
Saying, I'm not dealing at this point with the letter of the bylaw. I'm saying you have accounted for patrons. And have not accounted for any employee parking and if you can be either through uh. Uh, shuttling or bicycles or whatever, I mean, if people don't mind. Going and back of the light keepers and don't mind interfering with events that have historically been held there. Uh, that's one thing, but um.
Well, I think we, I think we can discuss that. What we're presenting to you. Is all the work we've done and the feedback we've received from you of. What the bylaw says, how to, how to get this to be approved by the bylaw. If you're asking us to also look at um something that. May not be required or or is something that's different.
Well, we can, we can. My concern is public safety first and foremost and. And uh, this complies with the bylaw in terms of patronage, but it doesn't address public safety.
Well, what I'm mentioning. Aiman, if I might, I I just want to, I just want to offer a different viewpoint. Because the the bylaw doesn't talk about patrons. It talks about one space for each three seats and we've been informed by the zoning enforcement officer. Um, that he believes that employee parking has been baked into that number. So that that number accommodates not only patrons but also employees and it's my experience. And I I'm happy to be corrected that in many towns, parking zoning bylaws are overly conservative. In fact, many towns have moved to adopt bylaws which allow an applicant to reduce. The, you know, zoning parking requirements in order to reduce parking because. Towns don't want to see large parking lots.
Right.
Underutilized. So I I'm I'm just going to offer a different viewpoint that I know that you referred to. One space for three patrons, but that's not what the bylaw says. It's one space for three seats and that.
Who's going to sit for seats, but except the patron?
I I'm sorry, all all I can tell you is is again that that, you know. And 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 we we've been informed that employee parking was baked into that calculation. I can't speak to the origination of that. I haven't done the historic research regarding that. I can certainly try and find out.
If you can, if you can find, if you can confirm that, I mean, the. You know, uh, an opinion uh doesn't, my opinion doesn't matter any more or less than the building inspector's opinion. And um. You know, if you can, if you can show that that's baked in, I would be a little surprised, but I don't care. If you can show it, uh, I'll accept it. But I'm, my only point is that, yes, you've accommodated uh patrons and I don't. You know, I I would urge you to come up with some plan that is actually implementable. To deal with employee parking.
Okay, Mr.
Really got to be offset.
Could I say something? Uh, how how many spaces would you like to see for that? If we, I don't agree with that. I believe it is baked into the one to three that includes. That's figured into employees, just like the hundred square feet is figured into employees. From past experience as well as the two lawyers here. Um, but how, say. To make you happy, how many spaces would you like to see?
If if you apply the the uh one hundred, one space per hundred feet to the nineteen hundred, you get nineteen spaces. And that's what the kitchen size is, is nineteen and hundred and change.
Well, that's part of that is being leased out to Old Salt House.
No, that that doesn't include the Old Salt House, which is another four hundred and fifty square feet.
If we made the kitchen a thousand feet, they don't need all that space. They could use half of that space, so.
Well, come up with a plan. Let us, let us see. I haven't seen.
With the way you want to figure it, so we're not running around in circles, so.
I've just told you. Ten, you know, if you apply the metric, it's nineteen and uh if if there may be a better system, there may be a a headcount.
Well, I I think that that's a, that's a good point, uh. Tom, which is, you you know, yeah, the nineteen, because again, we're we're labeling this according to the way the bylaw should read it. But if we're going to introduce another creative idea. The nineteen nineteen includes the toilets, the nineteen nineteen includes the stair.
It does not, it does not.
Yes, it does. So we'll figure out the kitchen size.
Way we do is we look at operational model and talk about, you know, and then we look at the actual overlap of hours and we have the extra, we have what, three extra parking spaces already? Uh, and then we look at how many staff there might be. And then we could look at some creative idea of innkeepers or something.
So that could be cut in half. We make half of it storage. The kitchen is a thousand square feet. They don't need that kitchen. Re- remember, if you can, the Atlantica. Served up to six hundred people at one time uh for one event, so it's a huge kitchen.
Yeah, it's way oversized. Good point, Tom.
People that are looking at that kitchen don't said that this is way too big. We don't need this, so. We can cut that into half, a thousand feet maybe and. Uh, take out the bathroom and uh, but it's still, you. We, if, so if we got that, you would be okay with the plan as is?
I'd have to see it, but I mean, you would be moving in the.
You're seeing it right now. It would be.
I'm just telling you, you're, listen, I'm not going to argue with you.
If we have a thousand-foot kitchen and ten.
I'm not going to commit to that right now. The way have the board hasn't been presented.
Well, when you, when you decide, let us know and then we'll continue with the project.
Alright, fine.
But what I, but what I think is important though, because we've made a lot of progress. And I I I like a positive approach to to everything. We all live together.
Okay, but look, timeout, timeout.
Also not counting into effect. Now you have Uber and Lyft and all that and.
Why can't I finish what I was saying? Why do I get?
Why, because you're.
Let me just say one of, this is a, a lot of people will walk to here.
Cassandra, I'd like to table this comments.
I've I've eaten, uh, you know, a B a hundred.
Alright, now, I've I've. I've laid out for you. The issue that I have, I've not tried to solve the problem. I'm sure you can come up with. Uh, maybe creative solutions or creative compromises. I would encourage you to do that.
Well, you haven't told us what you why yet.
I, can I interject here?
Yeah, please. Dave, you're you're muted, I think. Or frozen. Dave, uh Cassandra?
I'm sorry. Am I here or not?
Yeah, now.
Yes, okay, I'm having a little bit of internet issues. But I, I, again, this is a a really troublesome area because there's nothing specified clearly in the bylaw. And I, my view of this is. How we should approach this is just simply trying to solve the problem. Because of the, of the location of this facility. And the the difficulty of parking on street, it it does create. An employee parking issue that's very, I think. It. It really can be a problem and I would like to see the applicants. Come up with something that's helpful and I don't think that we have any. Any particular. Applicable bylaw that we can. Look to. We can look to it as a guideline, but I don't think we can can look to it as a, as a red line. And I, it it does seem to me that if the, if the applicant can make an effort to deal with some employee parking issues. So that we don't have to dedicate. Spaces that are onsite for employee use, then, you know, we we've gone a long way towards solving the problem. Um. Hey, no, I don't. I. I think it's important to understand that the board's job is to make sure the public safety is protected. But it's also. The board's job to make things work when they can work. So it seems to me that, you know, we can accommodate all of everyone's interests in a. In a pretty cooperative way. It has, it's gone that way so far and I think it can continue to go that way.
I agree with that. And what what I was going to suggest was. That's why we've gotten this far. What what I'd like to have is, I've heard. We agree with your metrics by the bylaw. By the seat count and the square footage to get to the thirty two. We agree with the hourly operations methodology. Which is really the way it works, the different parts of the day. And why don't we now take what is really now a beautiful, much safer, and we totally agree with you, Dave, on the safety issue, as again, I live on the border street. Go now task a, okay, how many employees might we have? And is there a solution in the town will work with us on it in keepers? And we we're 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 all a creative team. We have, we can come up with a solution. But we we want to at least get this far at this meeting to. To have clarity on what we've shown, which we've we've worked to to solve. And and I, yeah, we'll get creative and come up with a, come back to you with an employee uh concept.
Yeah, you may, you may wish to come up with with two alternatives. I mean, I I have no idea, but.
Sure, but again, and and you know, what we're hearing is it's a sort of. It makes a lot, it it, I understand why it's now sort of this. This point, it's not, there's not a. A requirement for it. There isn't a way to point to it of how to get that metric, as Tom was saying, what's the number? But. If we have, and and you know, hearing from you, the encouragement that you're agreeing with our metrics, agreeing with hourly, agreeing with how we counted out the spaces. You know, we're 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 very close there and and we're, you know. What we've, what we want to achieve is a group agreement on what you're looking at right here. Then we can go and look more carefully at employee parking, come up with with some options. And talk about that.
Okay, keep in mind, we're not making a decision here. I could say this probably a, you can gauge the. Uh, move, the intention of the board. They like what they're seeing. And I'll, uh, that's all. We haven't deliberated. We haven't voted, so we're not making a decision, but. Uh, certainly the winds are blowing favorably in your direction.
Yeah, no, I I understand that and, you know. We've got lots and lots of support and there's a lot of people watching right now. I see a lot of participants on the screen and. You know, a lot of people are going to weigh in and think and think it through. But I did hear loud and clear, we're not disputing your thirty two count. We have.
Right, we've gone over that. Trust me, we've gone over that.
Right, well, that's important. That's really important to us though, Woody, and so I'm glad to hear that because we work really hard on that. And also, we completely agree on the safety. The lot is designed now to be vastly different experience for people on bikes and pedestrian. Look at the width of the sidewalk. See where it says gutter line? Look at the gutter line to where the landscaping is. So completely agree. Trying to solve this within our own property line, not trying to have some triple backshot of the way it was before. Three ownerships, three locations. Intermingled solutions. This is.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll um kind of eagerly await your your next submission, which I hope. Uh, deals uh with employee parking in part, if not in whole. We're not asking you to solve, to create a miracle. We're asking.
Well, yeah, you know.
Well, I do think, you know, like when we, when we take a look at public safety, you know, to his point, to his credit, you know. If you look at these plans that we have and you look at the existing condition plan set, I don't know if um. Gabriel has that as his next document here, but I mean, you see the way that the spaces were configured previously. Jetting out into the roadway. You look at a scaled down big building, the staggering hours. I think that's stuff that we. That we are looking to hear um. When it comes from, when it comes to kind of our judgment call on public safety, so I I do appreciate. Hearing that, so.
Yeah, this is certainly a big improvement over what existed. Nobody would argue that point. That's a good, a good point, Matt. I mean, that's not before us uh as a contentious issue.
Well, what we are, we are presenting, I appreciate that, but we are presenting though, Woody, is. Better improved safety and I've written these notes down so many times that, you know, the, the obligation that you have, which is to. Um, you know, ensure wellness and safety of the community. We're achieving that here. That's that's huge. We've talked about that from the beginning with the architects. And the engineers. And in addition to the scaling it down in the hours operation, they're kind of interrelated to safety, but. It it is important and then therefore to also follow the bylaw to parking, so we're. We're addressing the objectives, but also the metrics.
Okay, well, I mean, I've made my request. I'm not going to just repeat it twenty times over.
Okay, now in terms of, just sort of, we're on the same page because we have a good working.
Alright, so I don't think we need to belabor the point. I don't.
I just wanted to say something, Woody, excuse me. I wanted just to talk about where we are time-wise and our objectives as a team and we're sort of a team here now. We're, we're going to come back to the next meeting and prior to that meeting, seven days prior, we're going to present some parking solution options. We're going to leave all this work as is. We're going to look to try to get through the next meeting and have a consensus of, does this meet and satisfy people's concerns? To seek approval and to get our, you know, whatever order you need to have written up, but we, you know, we're we're trying to just. You know, move along here and that's what our goals are with you.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Board, any other comments before we turn it over to public? Charlie? Wherever you are, I don't see Charlie anymore, but. Okay, we've heard from Matt, uh, Lee or Mike?
I'm good. Pretty good discussion.
Thanks, Mike.
I think I'm on now. I I would like to, because I can't tell from the the plans, parking lot one. Thirteen. Uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight and twenty-nine, uh, just have the dimensions and. Uh, how you get into those lots without backing into the street.
So Gabe, do you have that? We can just take up, you know, we'll, we'll add a little additional bubble diagram with dimensions.
Yep, I got uh number one. I'm sorry, I got number one and what was the next one that I uh?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. That's uh.
One thirteen, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
I will, yep, perfect. I will show all the mentions on those.
Great. Okay, anybody else in the board? Cassandra, who's in the uh waiting line?
Certainly nobody.
Okay. Oh, no, there's somebody raising, Dave Fulton has raised hand that says on my screen.
Yes, I do see that now. I'm going to pull him forward. Should be here now.
Cassandra, am I on?
You are.
Great. Uh, Dave Fulton, thirty-one border street. Um, so I live directly across from Old Salt, across from Lawrence Wharf. Um, and have to say that the original vision here for this site would have been great if, if, obviously if the parking could accommodate it. Um, I've met with Tom Sullivan. Do you guys know that since the last hearing, they've reduced uses, eliminated ice cream? Uh, alternating hours we support, um, but, but there is still concern about the parking. I'm a real estate developer myself. Um, I, I look at things, obviously you look at the bylaw, but also look at. Uh, what, what in reality is going to work at the end of the day? Um, I think, you know, you're, you're hitting it with the concern about employee parking. I think a spot like this, and I believe the way Tom's gonna run this, you, you're gonna see. A lot of people from distant places coming here. This is gonna become a real destination. Um, and I, I don't believe the onsite parking will accommodate it, so I decided to take a look at. You know, some examples around town, uh, corner stop being kind of the only real siloed by itself. Uh, example I could look at where they have a hundred and twenty seats in the restaurant or occupancy. Like they have about a hundred and fifteen seats and talked to the owner about it. They have thirty-eight onsite parking spaces, so they're. Just about two spaces under the current one to three metric that you're talking about. But they have, they actually ask all employees to park offsite. Uh, on the street, they have ample parking in the street and then they also have customer overflow, you know, estimated between ten to twenty cars in the street as well. Um, so I, I think looking creatively at solutions here, offsite. Um, whether the site can actually accommodate additional cars, tandem, and have an onsite valet. You know, I think it's really time to get very creative because the reality here as an observer who. Watches what happens in the summer weekends and we're really talking June, July, August and really into September, when we have the nice September weather. Uh, this street is beyond capacity. And now having, and I'm saying from the border street bridge all the way to Veterans Park and then even going when, um. The Legion has events going all, you know, down somewhere in Elm Street. The rea- and people coming here from out of town to use the public dock, going to the water. Our own residents using, uh, the street to get to their tender, to get out to their boats or to the beach. Um, Old Salt, obviously, and, uh, the, uh, fishing fleet, you know, takes priority. Um, reality is the street is at max right now. It's actually getting dangerous as we speak. I'm getting texts on weekend people parked in my driveway. Uh, happened two weekends ago. I went outside to see what was happening. It was a point in the day where people were circling around doing three-point turns in the street, so. Um, safety is clearly a concern, but also, you know, we want, we want this site to be redeveloped. You know, I believe Tom will do a good job at that, um, but we really need to look at the reality. In addition to the bylaw, look at the reality of what's gonna happen here. Um, so I, I see that that's the avenue of where you're going, like, you know, and I appreciate that and I do think that Tom and his team will work with the guys in this. In all of this, because we'll have continued conversations with them between now and the, uh, next hearing.
Okay. Cassandra, anybody else?
Not that I see.
Okay, well, I think that. The board has not come to grips yet with employee parking, but what we have done is asked for. Some creative, uh. Ways to address. Sorry, I guess I've been muted. Can I talk now?
Did I do that? Sorry.
Yeah, no, I've been muted two or three times, but.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right. I probably deserve it, uh, so that's, uh, you know, who can complain, but, um, yeah, I, I think, I think we are. Uh, looking toward a, uh, creative team here. We're not the team, but the team has spoken. Uh, it's creative and looking for some more creativity to deal with the. Uh, important, uh, issue of employee parking and, um, what you've got here is. I think, I think you've maximized pretty much, Dave may be right, but I'm not sure you can squeeze more than one. One other parking space on this lot and it's certainly a vast improvement, so. We're gonna move, move on beyond this. I think we're all on the same page and are now looking to see what, what can be done creatively. With, uh, employees. So it's, it's, it's just good business sense. You certainly don't want employees taking the space that a, a tourist from Boston, uh. You know, would, would like to use, who moves, moves on to Situate, um, you know, that just doesn't make good business sense, so. It's to everybody's interest. So with that, I don't think I've got. Um, anything more to add to this proposition? We, we meet in early July. If you can be ready, then great. If not, um. You know, give it some thought. I, I'm sure there's, there's, there are creative solutions out there.
Yep. No, I really appreciate it, Woody. Uh, I think we feel the same way. We do have a great creative team. I mean, it's a local team too and. We care a lot about this. I'm glad Dave Full, you know, dialed in. He lives on border street also. We will be ready for the next meeting for sure. We'll make sure we hit the deadline for submitting a memo relating to these creative ideas prior. And when prepared to continue the discussion at the next meeting.
Okay. So with that, I move that we continue the, uh, hearing until, um. Cassandra, help me out. July what? July twelfth. Um, all in favor, Woody Chitikai? Matt, how about you?
Matt Watkins, I.
How about you, Lee? Well, Dave, you're, you, you voted in favor, I guess.
I did, yes.
Yeah, and so we have Mike Dickey.
I, I'll vote I as well.
All right, so it's continued till July twelfth. There are only two very small pieces of business, one of which is.
Thank you. I guess we'll, we'll sign off as the.
Yeah, I, yeah, the rest of it, it doesn't concern your.
Will, we'll, we're gonna reach out right away to try to see what other ideas we have and get creative, as you say, but, um, appreciate it. We'll be in touch.
Okay.
Thanks, Woody.
All right.
Good night.
Good everyone. Thank you. So zoning board, two, two small things. One, do we have any volunteer? For, uh, to join the zoning bylaw working group?
Um, I had a couple of questions. I, I asked Cassandra, but, you know, when they meet, because that's a.
Key thing, yeah.
Big issue for me and I also interested in who else is on it.
Uh, so right now, uh, the goal is to meet every two weeks, but that is not set in stone as of yet. I believe, I don't have the list in front of me, um, but Tom Callahan is on it. I believe Clark Brewer, Cassie Malatesta, um. And Jack Creighton, um, is the select board representative for it.
And they're looking for somebody from our group and what, two other at large or one other at large?
I believe it's at least one other at large.
Charlie had the brilliant idea, although I don't, I haven't approached him, of, uh. Contacting Ben Lacy, who is a resident of Cohasset and would be eligible for such a board. Or group, I should say. But if we could get Dave, I mean, that's. I don't know whether Ben really has any interest, honestly, but Charlie, have you spoken to him or not?
We have lost Charlie.
Okay. Well, Dave, you wanna mull it over a little bit? Anybody else? It's, um. You know.
I do.
Okay. All right, if anybody else wants to throw their hat in the ring, please, please do. It's, um. It is what it is. Okay, the last piece of business is we need a volunteer to draft a decision on, uh, I guess forty-six Hobart. Lane, the, um. Reardon property. Does anybody?
So does Brendan? Have to look back. Doesn't Brendan still, didn't he kind of have to stop short with pre- presenting us the materials? Cause he, cause he wasn't prepared?
He has submitted new materials, um.
Oh.
That it will be in your packets.
So with the materials, we haven't even seen, so.
So, yeah, I might.
A little tough to draft a decision right now on that.
Yeah, I mean, I might be due soon, but I, we, we don't have any real obligation, I don't think, to jump on that, um. Just.
Yeah.
Because I, I don't think he's presented us with the, with an accurate plan, you know?
Yeah, e- even with the, the boilerplate first two or three paragraphs, we could. You know, have errors in there just because things have changed. Sandra, I think we should wait. And not make an assignment. And Carolyn Murray. Do you have any last words of wisdom or consolation or?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
No. A woman of few words, all right? Okay, so we will, uh, convene and, um, I'm optimistic that, that, um. Creativity will, um, continue to percolate in, among the co-lobster group and. As you can tell, I'm not going easily on the issue of employee parking, but, um. We shall see.
Do we have any new hearings, Cassandra, on July, or are they all continued hearings? Do we know yet?
Uh, I believe there are two new ones, both of which are on border street.
Oh, my. Hmm, okay. All right, so, um, the filing deadline is passed, right? I mean.
For July, yes.
If it's July, so.
It'll just be those two.
You have what you have. So, okay, um, with that, and if there are any further thoughts the board has on. Uh, employee parking one way or another, that we shouldn't touch it. And, and let it, let it be, or that we should seek some sort of resolution in whole or in part. I'd love to hear it.
Well. I think. This isn't. Because of the way the bylaws written and because of the. The ambiguity here, it, I don't think this is something that, um, we want to litigate or they want to mitigate. I think they're going to make some good faith efforts to address this and I'm. Looking forward to seeing what they come up with.
Okay.
And I'm, I am, um, optimistic because they are a local group. If it was somebody from out of town who just.
On their nose, yeah, yeah.
So.
No, and it's to their best, uh, business interest, frankly, to come up with some sort of solution in whole or in part. You really don't want employees parking in the pre, you know. Two, two, two spaces down from the entrance. Uh, particularly if, if those spaces get filled up quickly, as I fear they will anyway, even if they do comply with the bylaw. So I'm optimistic with. Blind faith. Anyway, uh, any other business? Carolyn, is there anything that we should be considering other than what we've talked about tonight or?
No, there isn't, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, I'd make a motion to adjourn the, uh, the meeting until July twelfth. Moved and seconded all in favor, Woody Chitikai?
Hey, McMorris, I.
Lee Darst, I.
Mike Dickey, I.
Five to zip. All right, thanks a lot for your time, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Have a happy fourth.
Yes, happy fourth.